We all for a meeting tonight. Warm Sunday. So we'll open the meeting back to the House of Republicans as they connect to the board. Okay. Nothing there, then we will review the bills. You could please. We should have five pages of bills. Starting July 5th.
I just wanted to let the board be aware that I cut a check last week to the American Legion for the July 4th celebration for $4,600.
Say that again.
I cut a check last week to the American Legion for the July 4th celebration. We didn't make it to the last meeting, but we did it for this weekend.
How much do you cut a check for?
Four thousand, six hundred dollars.
And that's supportive of what?
Uh, fireworks again.
Fireworks?
The whole celebration.
Okay.
Make a motion, pay the bills, the addition.
Have a second on that?
One second.
Here we go, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any motion to carry? Next thing on our agenda is correspondence.
Excuse me, this is Mayor. Uh, the minutes for the June 20th meeting have to be approved.
Why don't I skip right over that?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for pointing that out. We do have minutes for the previous meeting, and right here in my, uh, my binder for the meeting held on June 20th, 2016. After your review, we'd like a motion to approve both minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for June 20th?
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry. Again, thank you. We'll talk around the bills in a minute, but we're gonna get to the correspondence now, and I believe you have something for us?
I do. Date in May 24th, 2016. Dear Board of Trustees of the Dodge Memorial Library, it is with great regret that as of this date, I am resigning my position of volunteer, page, and cleaner of Dodge Memorial Library due to personality issues between Susan Sullivan and myself. I have been honored to have served the library for the past six years. As you know, I love the building and am confident that the board will continue to honor the historic significance of the building due to the community. Thank you for your support over the years. Respectfully, Judith Bergeron.
All right. Dratfully, but we'd like to have a motion to accept this resignation.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
One second?
Second.
And again, discussion, we'd like to thank Ms. Bergeron for her years of service to us and, uh...
Sorry that she left. How sorry that she left.
Absolutely. And would hope that she finds, uh, you know, she's able to find where she's going, where she's...
You're looking for another one, or you got one, or...
No, uh, that's up to Andy Huer. I already talked to him about the situation and stuff.
Okay, let's have a vote on whether or not to accept this. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resignation is accepted. Thank you. Okay, uh, we have a few, very few items here. It looks like they're all under me, so I'll go through them rather quickly. The first thing that we have is an IEP request from Tom Vilati. Mr. Vilati is in the process of renovating, uh, a former home, turning it into a restaurant. He came in the office, asked if IEP funds might be available. We, uh, for insulation, that is. We asked Mr. Trudeau to come, from IEP, to come down and check it out. He did so. And, uh, came up with, uh, the amount of $7,200, um, that could be provided to him and is part of the energy-saving, uh, program in IEP. Uh, it's above the $5,000 limit that was previously established for mayoral approval. So we need the board approval for that $7,200 amount. Again, that comes out of our IEP account. It's for insulation and we just for a new business. So I would like to have a motion to approve that expenditure.
I make a motion to approve that expenditure.
Second.
Further discussion?
Has, uh, where we're going above what the previous board has normally given out, do we know what other villages do, if they set limits, or do they just grant requests as they come along for IEP?
IEP evaluates the, uh, request.
Okay.
And they tell us, look, this is legitimate, and this is what it will cost, what we're going through. As an individual, I have applied recently, I have an individual apply for $2,120 for wall and ceiling, it's legit. I approved that, um, because it was well that. It was simply up to the board. I, I don't have the minutes. I know that they decided, look, if it's over $5,000, even though it's coming out of our IEP account, which comes from the electoral department, from our revenues from that, and we're mandated to, in order to continue receiving, um, the hydroelectric power to establish a, a robust efficiency, electrical efficiency program. So that's kind of where we're at. But we, they said, they tell us what the amount is after they look at the application.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the, uh, the IEP request for $7,200 will be taken care of. Okay, in recent, a couple of different recent board meetings, there've been some discussions of non-resident, uh, water fees and residents who must pay New York State Electric and Gas as their electrical provider. Let's look at the electricity first. And it's had an interesting, maybe not to the people, but the fact, it's an interesting way things are done. There are, there are 25 parcels within the corporate limits of the Village of Rousas Point who do not get electrical power. And there are 21 parcels outside the corporate limits of the Village of Rousas Point who do receive electrical power, village electrical rates. Now, this is because the corporate limits of the village are different than the electrical franchise limits. And it's was, I'm not exactly sure how long ago this was established, but it was sometime, maybe, uh, Mr. Trey, can you help me with that? Do you know how long ago that? It was more than 30 years.
Before your time.
Yeah, that hasn't changed since.
Right. So this has been, this has been an ongoing, these boundaries have been set. New York State Electric and Gas has been petitioned in the past for us to try to annex those parcels that were within the village to be able to provide them with village power. They have refused to give up that franchise, that part of their franchise, which are perfectly entitled to. I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong with that. It's, but it, it does put a, uh, it does make it seem unfair. The fact, the matter is, though, when those parcels were purchased in the village, it was with full knowledge that there was not village power going to those parcels. They get village water and sewage, but not electrical power. And the people that are outside village with, uh, village power are part of that, are part of that district, are part of our electoral district. Now, in line with that is the, uh, the water situation. And as it stands now, um, the residences outside the corporate boundaries of Village of Rousas Point pay $92 per month for their water service. Now, none of those residents pay village taxes. And other than their monthly payment, they don't provide any other revenues to support the required infrastructure for our water system. These individuals are also free to have wells drilled on their property to go along with the septic system that they already have in place. We would then discontinue water service to their properties, thus eliminating their monthly payments to the village. So if they're outside the village and they're receiving village water, they're perfectly entitled to stop, say, "I don't want that water anymore," and to dig a well. And we will, you know, we will stop supplying them with water. If you're within the village, water goes by you, you have to take it. So that's a difference. So again, if, if there's any concern that people living outside the village that are paying, oh, water rates above and beyond, uh, well, again, they're paying double the water service rate, but no taxes. But one, I, actually, I think we have one individual who has a tiny portion of his, of their land within the village, and they pay about $3,000 in taxes a year. No, it's valued at $3,000.
I was gonna say, can't pay $3,000 if you have an awful lot of...
They have to own half the village, yeah, at our little tax rates. But, but, uh, basically, the idea is, if you don't, if you don't want the water and you live outside the village, you don't have to take it. And as far as electricity goes, it's based on where our franchise is, and there's really nothing else we can do about it. So hopefully that resolves the situation, makes it clear why, how, how that can possibly happen, how can you live in the village and pay village taxes and not get village power? It's your electrical franchise. Same thing, if you live outside the village, you're still within our, within our electrical franchise, and we can't provide you with electrical power, and we do. Okay, you guys have any comments on that, or any further things you'd like to talk about?
On the, uh, on the water side of it, uh, for a couple months, I've looked at something, and if my facts are right, um, when all of this went into play, it was if, uh, if you didn't pay village taxes, you didn't pay any village taxes, then you were subject to the doubling of the water. They didn't say whether it was $30 a year or $3,000 a year. My second point would be to this, is that if you are paying village taxes and if, and even if you're getting water or sewer or electric rates, the fees collected going to those funds and just the fees you pay, pay for the interest, infrastructure, not your, not your general tax bill. So you are paying, if you're paying, uh, if you are paying a water bill, or a sewer bill, or electric bill through the Village of Rousas Point, then you're already paying for the infrastructure in place. So within the, the one case of the one person that does pay very minimal taxes, but yet on a very small piece of land, he does pay village taxes. And, uh, I think an exception should be made, a correction to the past practice of that, an exception be made, because it's not even really an exception. Within the water bills that I pay at $44 a month are the fees for my water and the fees for my infrastructure. And so it, it's really, if, if they said a village taxpayer, and then with the infrastructure coming out of the fees that you pay for water, then the one resident that is a village taxpayer should be able to have the rates that the rest of us within the village have.
Well, be clear that he is not, that, that residence in, in, the majority of that residence is outside the village.
Absolutely.
Okay, can, can I just...
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and that individual is not required to take that water.
I understand that.
As if, if you were a village resident, you would be required to take that water.
Yes, I understand.
This individual has, this, this lot of land has the option of digging their own well.
Yes.
That's not available to village taxpayers in the village's corporate lands.
I understand that.
Okay.
And, and the other thing is that if, if this taxpayer does decide that he wants to drill his own well, um, any kind of revenue we were getting from them, from somebody like that, we're gonna lose. And it averages out, uh, any wish from $600 to $1,000 a year according to what they're paying for fees. I just can't see where the village would want to lose that income. That one taxpayer.
Okay, any other comments?
It is, uh, quite a bit of money, but, you know, like you say, you know, it's if and or but, whatever. I mean, he has the option of two things, either take the village water, or the double water, or drill his own well and stuff. I mean, you know, I think if I was outside the village, I don't know, I'd probably take, take the well water before village water, I don't know. So I don't know, but I think, you know, I'm not in that situation, but, you know, if I was, I think I'd, I'd have a well.
But you have a, you have an option, you don't have that option if you're in a...
Right, and in the corporation.
So the lot this person has in the village, he can't put a well on that, because it's a little pieces in the village.
It's not, it's not a lot, it's a portion thereof.
Well, it's a section, yes.
Yeah, it's a section. Okay, any more comments?
I'd just like to make a, I'd just like to make a motion that, uh, we sit down with that one taxpayer and try to see what we can do, do for him. That's an informal motion.
An informal motion.
Second.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we usually make motions to have a conversation with the taxpayer. I'm not quite sure what...
Well, I would like to grant him the $44 a month water fees that everyone else pays that is a taxpayer within, uh, pays taxes. And that's my motion.
Okay, uh, if you're, you're saying, you are saying that, your motion is that an individual, this one, this is...
This one individual.
One single individual, and you're confident there's no others?
That's right.
That, uh, because this individual lot has, what, what, can you tell me what, you know, what you, I would like to know what percentage of that land is in the village?
Very small parcel.
Or is it 1% or is it 30%?
I didn't do the, uh, the figures on that. I didn't, I didn't get that down into it once I took the other points of the village law or rules, and I looked at that and I said, "Well, he's paying into the infrastructure now."
From his pockets in the village?
That's right, from his pockets in the village, and just by him paying his water bill, he's paying his infrastructure fees, and he's not, he's not impacting, in other words, causing it, uh, any problem with, uh, the infrastructure. You'd be paying the same as everybody else that pays their $44 bill and, and the infrastructure is taken out of that.
The, uh, the taxes paid by village residents do, in fact, support, you know, all facets of our infrastructure. If there's a need for additional funds, we reach into the general fund to get that. If, if, uh, if someone is not fully contributing to that, uh, as a, as a whole lot in the village, uh, it would seem like that would be, it was, it's not, it's not the intent or the purpose of the law that says if you live within the corporate limits of the village that we do that. Is this residence, is this lot's house within the village?
It is not.
Okay. I don't think that was the intent of the law to take that wording and try to twist it around to make it, well, he pays $40 a year in taxes, so that makes him, yes, my taxpayer, he is, but I, you know, I, I tried to look at the intent of what this law is, right? And I don't personally believe that's what it is. I don't, I don't think that's the, uh, that was what was envisioned when it was made. And looking at it now, I don't think that's what the, the law is meant to do.
Personally. Can I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, but, uh, what? The customer that you're talking about previously thought that they were paying one and a half times, one and a half times the rate, so I don't know if that'd be an option, if you guys throw that out.
Well, I mean, I don't know if you wanna start trying to amend laws for one particular item where there's, like I say, a tiny little portion of the law is touching the village. The residence is not in the village, um, and, you know, I'm just trying to look at the overall intent of the law, what the law was intended to do, and I don't think that's what it was intended to do. That's the, the way I see it.
You know, it, it could also be said that this taxpayer was only paying the regular $44 amount until he stated he thought he was paying one and a half, but he wasn't, he was only paying one. The village has previously billed him for the regular fee because he does pay a tiny portion of taxes to the village, he has paid it, and then the village, once they found this out, they went to rectify these, this situation, if they so-called it, in, uh...
I think it was called an error.
An error. That's, that's right. And so it isn't like the, the taxpayer has, has always been paying this double rate. He's been paying the single rate. There again, I, I acknowledge what you're saying about the law and the rules and what the previous board did.
Well, I, you know, Tom, I, you know, I understand your point completely, I'm just saying that the intent of the law in general is to, uh, you know, provide service to individuals within the corporate limits of the Village of Rousas Point that are taxpayers, they pay taxes on their residences, they fully support all of the infrastructure of the village, and not just, they can't just, um, you know, you can't just pick out little things, "Well, I'll support that," you know? I mean, not by any choice, but that's what it works out to. And I, there's, I don't think there's any way that a reasonable person could try to interpret that to say, "Well, you know, it's, it, since he pays $30 a year in taxes, he's a village taxpayer in the same frame as you are, or he is, or he is..."
Absolutely, and I'm in agreement of that. But the board, when they made that decision, how many hundreds of years ago, or even just 20 years ago, uh, they didn't say whether you pay $30 taxes or if you pay $3,000 taxes a year.
No, but I think it was, I think, like I said, you take it, you, you know, in the court of law, you probably know, they'll say, "If a reasonable person can accept a reasonable explanation," yes, "that, that defies reason to say, you know, because a person is paying it, you know, like you say, perhaps it's 1%, perhaps it's 3%, then that's, that equals what the other residents are and should have the same benefits." I, I don't think that's what the law was intended to do.
Well, me...
Yeah, go ahead.
Me first, I'd like to talk to this resident and look into it a little bit, and bring it on the next meeting, make a decision then, instead of talking about it for three hours tonight.
Well, I, I agree. I mean, uh, you certainly, certainly can do that. You don't need a, a motion to talk to somebody, you, you know? If, if they're outside the village, you know, if they're, if they're not a village resident, do they vote in village elections? Is it?
Well, I don't know. I mean, there again, we're, we're continuing to put parameters in there that, like you said earlier, we shouldn't be picking at the different parameters of...
We're trying to say that if it's a resident, all village residents can vote in elections.
Yes.
So, you know, if you want to, I mean, it'd be like, you know, you're talking to a resident of the town of Champlain about, of, as Trustee Moore said, about, about what you want to talk about, and you certainly, anyone on this board is entitled to talk to anybody they want and bring it back up, bring it back up here for further discussion. And, and, uh, I would encourage you to do that. So you, you want to leave it at this, or how do you want to leave this? I mean, I, I want you to be satisfied it's left where you want it. Well, I say like Duna said, we'll talk to the...
I'll, I'll withdraw any motion that I made earlier, and...
We'll talk to the resident?
So that, so that, uh, we can have our own discussions of them tonight. But leave it open that we can talk about it again in a public session if we have to.
Yes.
Okay, anybody satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Do you need more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's been, okay, the next thing we have is a resolution, which we'll require to have, and I will have to read that to you, regarding, uh, adopting a fair housing plan and appointing a fair housing officer to the Village of Rousas Point in accordance with Community Development Law Grant. Uh, this is Resolution 201622. Whereas U.S. Housing and Community Development Acts of 1974, as amended, provides for the development of viable, urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities, especially for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas said act authorizes the sector of housing, urban development, through the New York State Division of Homes and Community Renewal Office of Community Renewal, to make grants to units of general local government to help finance community development programs under Section 103A, 1 of Title 1. And whereas, under said legislation, eligible applicants in the case of municipalities are required to prepare and adopt a fair housing plan and appoint a fair housing officer in compliance with applicable laws and regulations under Title 1 of said acts. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rousas Point does hereby adopt the Village of Rousas Point Fair Housing Plan effective November 5th, 2012, and review July 5th, 2016, pursuant to Title 1 of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, and be it further resolved that the Village of Rousas Point does hereby designate the Village Clerk as the Rousas Point Fair Housing Officer to oversee compliance with all aspects of the Fair Housing Plan, and be it further resolved that the Fair Housing Officer is appointed for a term not to exceed 10 years unless otherwise modified by act of the Village Board of the Village of Rousas Point, and be it further resolved, to the extent all or any actions hereby authorized have been executed and or performed by the Fair Housing Officer are all hereby ratified and confirmed, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately, the question of the foregoing, uh, put to a roll call vote. So we'll do that now. Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
As three eyes, motion is passed, the resolution is accepted. Thank you. Okay, uh, the last thing that I have, just wanted to let you guys know that we have submitted the, uh, second, uh, rep trail payment voucher for $10,000. That brings it to $20,000. We were able to do that based on the work that Public Works has done, has practically completed, uh, the preparation for, uh, the payment to be put down. The fact that it was almost done, uh, they, they said, "Submit your second voucher." So again, that, that's in, so we've submitted vouchers for $20,000 for the rep trail to this point, and there'll be one more submission, uh, completion for the last $10,000. Okay, Trustee Moore, you have anything?
No, just take the telephone a little bit for a focus July, the village is in good health, getting everything ready. I think everything went well. That's all I have.
Okay, Trustee Arnold?
The water plant, the disinfectant that they're doing and the sampling and stuff, the monitoring of the water and stuff like that is, is really going well. The average is down on the, on the count and stuff, and...
It's within acceptable limits.
Right, acceptable limits, and which is good.
Yes.
And they're still continuing to flush the hydrants and stuff, and they're doing their water, flower watering and stuff like that. Uh, the garbage cans are in. We have three of them to place out and stuff, so I can do that tomorrow, or have the village crew do that, whatever. And also, uh, on the sign, at the, here they go. Uh, we decided not to touch it, and just leave it there and stuff like that, so.
I think that was a good decision you all, everybody made, I know you're all involved in that discussion. You know, we're not, we're allowing people to fish down there, and it would, I, we couldn't find a way, I think I was gonna find a way to make that sign, you know, look acceptable.
Presentable, yeah, yeah.
So I think that was a great idea.
Yeah.
But thank you all for coming up with that.
And one other thing, uh, resident of the Village of Rousas Point, stop me this morning, wanted to know how come the village crew did not speak to the streets after Fourth of July? There was quite a bit of debris on the streets, and I thought they looked pretty good myself, but...
Well, everybody has their, I guess, has their degree of what they think, and I, I, as Duna said, I think the doors look pretty darn good after. They put in a lot of hours, uh, in preparation, and driving around, I, I thought it looked pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Trustee Dart?
I have nothing.
Okay, uh... Okay, we are going to adjourn now, and we'll be moving into executive session. We got some, well, we may have some other reports, I didn't think we did, but do we?
I just wanted.
Nothing from you?
Okay, Mr. Treger, sorry.
I just wanted to let the board know that we're gonna be computer training the next couple days, same guy that was here a couple weeks ago is coming up, and, 'cause we're gonna be running our first billing of the new utility billing system.
Okay.
So everybody's getting a paper bill this month.
Oh, I thought you were having a computer training for me, or something.
We don't have enough time for that.
Well, that was good, Arce, thank you.
Local enforcement officers, everybody, do you have anything to report?
Not right now.
Okay. Boy, I appreciate, I tell you, I appreciate you checking out the stage, there were some possible issues with that, and appreciate prompt response, I spoke to the stage chairman this morning, and he understands what's going on, and so, you know, nice, you know, you ensure the safety of that, and so that's, that's something much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, if any members of the public have anything they would like to address the board now?
I would like to address the board.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, Cliff Sterling, I'm not a village of Rouse's Point resident, I have the town of Champlain, I'm the one in question for the property. Reason that I have a lot of concern with it, I've been a resident of the village of Rouse's Point for over forty-five years. The property that I bought, through the years, has been split up between the village of Rouse's Point and the town of Champlain. It used to be all the town, 'cause it was a farm. Through the years, from the ankles and stuff, they sold it to three residents on Church Street, which gave three new homes to the village of Rouse's Point. Then the last one I went in was the, was John Oliver's house on Chapman Street, which is the line of my property. So I own a little piece in question in the very back, but that's all that was left to the village of Rouse's Point, otherwise I would own more. Three years ago, I tried to annex into the village of Rouse's Point through our lawyer that the village of Rouse's Point had, which was Bill Favre. Charged me almost eight hundred dollars to do nothing, so I never annexed it, because it's not after Congress, who's gotta get the town of Champlain to be able, willing to sign off, right, to come to the village of Rouse's Point. I was gonna lose money signing off the village of Rouse's Point as a resident, because I would be paying all village taxes and still not gaining anything. So it was a loss, but it gave me, it made me a resident of the village of Rouse's Point, it made me allowed to vote for the people that I work with on a daily basis and stuff for the board. So I did try to make the process of annexing it and stuff to correct, to become a resident. That property that I own right now is big enough to put a house on. So in the future, I can sell that to give one more resident a home in the village of Rouse's Point. Why would I even dream of selling it if the board isn't even willing to think about what I have, what I'm asking for? Now, what I'm asking forward from you guys, you tried forty-four dollars extra a month, which just started, and there was an oversight, obviously, in the past, I was told when I first bought the property that Mary Antia only paid one and a half. I took it over from her, and was only paying the one and a half, but apparently I was only paying the single rate. Then it jumped up the devil. That was pretty much overnight when it jumped up the devil, there was no warning other than a five-day or a seven-day notice, and it went right up. It wasn't, "Hey, Cliff, three months, now this is what's gonna happen."
No, you were given, you were given a letter.
And we're not gonna have, we're not, we're not gonna have a discussion, you, you're gonna make your comments?
All right, so, so what I'm saying, you made it very clear, Mayor, that if we have one village drill well, we have that, that access. Well, I do have a well already in place, so I can cut that line, all I need to do is put a plastic pipe in, and I can have water next week. I don't wanna go that route, I don't have to, because the board, the village of Rouse's Point will lose my entire income that I pay now, which before it was forty-four, you're gonna lose eighty-eight, you're still gonna lose the forty-four dollars no matter how you look at it. It's only gonna cost me a hundred dollars to hook that water up. I'm willing to pay the forty-four if everybody just says, "You know what, we accept it," 'cause I am a taxpayer regardless of how you look at it, because whether you agree or not I agree, 'cause I don't vote here, I pay taxes, I put a lot of my money back into this village, not the town of Champlain, I eat here, I spend my money here, I pull all my money into the village of Rouse's Point. And I, and I, and I'm very proud to, to walk around saying, "I'm a Rouse, I'm a village of Rouse's Point," even, even if I am town of Champlain, I consider myself village of Rouse's Point resident. And forty-four dollars stuff didn't solve to me, and they throw it out saying, "Well, technically, you're town of Champlain." There's a lot of guys up there that are the town of Champlain, and I argued this with the previous mayor about our electrical, with shutting off our lights, not going on the ground power. I pay electric for village of Rouse's Point, I pay water for the village of Rouse's Point, I just want my bill to be like everybody else, 'cause I do pay village tax, whether it's twenty dollars or two thousand dollars a year, I pay taxes to the village. And I put my money back in, and I'm asking the board to really think that through, and it doesn't have to be tabled for three months, the decision can be made tonight, because that's what I'm looking for. It's a simple yes or no, if you want me to go ahead and hook up my well, then that's what's gonna happen. And the village is gonna lose this money forever. That's the bottom line, you're gonna lose that money forever. Now, we put a bike path up that we gave five thousand dollar grant to, that's ten years of my water bill, ten years of it. I mean, we throw money away on a lot of stupid stuff, so you can't sacrifice forty-four dollars for my home, that's all I'm asking. The other residents don't wanna be here telling, arguing, that's their business, but I do contribute to the village of Rouse's Point, they don't. Just, I, I just want the board to be aware of that, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Okay, anybody else? All right, now we will adjourn, we're gonna be moving into executive session. I thank you all for your attention and your comments, so the meeting is adjourned for a few minutes, well, all things.
Make a motion, go into a second.
Make a motion, go into a second.
On second.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All, okay, everybody else?
Bye, Tia.
Bye.
Tia, have a good night.
You too.
Right.
Let me say, that's Christmas.
Hi, guys.
I shouldn't be.
Hey.
We don't need to.
We do not.